My name is Peggy Kell and I'm the Voter Service Chair for the League of Women Voters of Oak Park and River Forest. Tonight, we are holding a candidate forum for the contested Oak Park Elementary School 97 municipal election. A recording of this evening will be posted on our website at LWVOPRF.org and on the library's website for later viewing by voters. The League does not endorse candidates, but does believe that voters should hear from those that are running to represent them. Our League will be having candidate forums for the contested races in Oak Park, Forest Park, and Elmwood Park in the next few weeks. Please visit our website, candidateforumcalendar@LWVOPRF.org for the dates and the links to register for the forums. You can register right on our calendar for the forums. That will be virtual, or you can go to the library website and register. You can also submit questions for the candidates in advance for these forums by emailing LWVOPRF1924@gmail.com. But you can also submit questions during the forums. The Oak Park Library is our valued partner in this forum. Thanks to Washme Swain and Bridget Abdalt for their help with scheduling and their technology assistance for this event. Bridget will be our timer for tonight. Candidates will start off with opening statements of one minute each, followed by questions for all, and finishing with one-minute closing statements. We will start in alphabetical order and then rotate through the candidates. The candidates tonight are Nancy Ross-Dribbin, Vincent Gay, Venus Heard-Johnson, Twyla Blackman-Larnell, Ashley Lenz, and Becky Perez. We will start with an opening statement, starting with Nancy Dribbin. Thank you.
Hi there, and thank you so much, Peggy, for getting us started tonight. My name is Nancy Ross-Dribbin, and I am currently serving on the D-97 Board. My family and I have lived in Oak Park for over 12 years. I have two children attending Julian Middle School, and I've been actively involved in D-97 for over eight years. I was elected to the school board in 2021, and I am now seeking a second term to continue the important work supporting all of our community's children. We still have work to do to reach our equity and education goals. I bring decades of education research, resource development, and nonprofit management expertise to the table. I am currently pursuing a PhD in Information Studies at Dominican University with a focus on supporting informed voting for teen voters. Prior to starting back at school, I worked as a usability research consultant, and I'm the former Director of Interactive at Adler Planetarium. Related to my PhD work, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting all the candidate forums, and thank everyone who's tuned in or watching this recording at a later time.
Thank you, Nancy. Vincent?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vincent Gay, and I'm running for D-97 School Board. My family, we moved here in 2015, and a big draw for us to move to Oak Park was schools. We had a kindergartner, and we were in the city, and we realized that we wanted to provide a better educational roadmap for our kids. I've spent my entire career as an educator. I was a... Right out of college, I was a high school history teacher, then stayed within education, and later became a high school principal. So I served as high school principal in Chicago for seven years. When we moved to Oak Park, I really wanted to get involved, so I served as a co-president of the Whittier PTO. While there, we were able to put up basketball rooms, which were really exciting. I have two kids in D-97. I've got a fourth grader at Whittier, and I've got an eighth grader at Brooks, and we've had an amazing experience. I also am a AL instructor for eighth graders, teaching sexual health to the community.
Thank you. Venus?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us this evening. My name is Venus Heard-Johnson. I've lived in Oak Park for the last 20 years with my husband and two sons, both of which have matriculated through Oak Park D-97 schools. I have one OPRF graduate, and my younger son is a junior. I am seeking a second term to serve on the D-97 School Board. For the last four years, I have really enjoyed the work that we have done with the school board. It is important work. It is time-consuming work, but it's also passionate work. I think we have a lot of really good programs, and we're on a great trajectory. We've made a lot of changes. We've hired a superintendent. We've lived through COVID. Nancy and I were elected together. And for the last two years, we really have been able to do more traditional boardwork and have gotten a lot of really great... Oops, I stopped. That was fast.
Well, if you want it, like again, you can always add some more information in your closing statement then. Thank you. Twyla?
Hello, everybody. My name is Twyla Blackman-Larnell, and I am running for the OP School Board because I am just really excited about helping to support my neighbors as they continue to educate their children here in Oak Park. I also am the mother of two girls here in Oak Park. Everybody knows me as Zariah's mom. Zariah is a senior at the high school. She started off as an Irving Eagle. We're very excited for her. She's now Cinderella in the high school's musical. And then I also have my youngest, Daphne. As you can see, she was going to make an appearance. Daphne is a kindergartner at Irving, so yes, I have a senior and a kindergartner. We did this dance once. We're doing it again, and I'm really excited to participate in the education community in this format. I am a political scientist and Associate Professor of Political Science at Loyola, and I focus on Irving and local government and politics. So this area also kind of falls in line with my day-to-day research and teaching interests as well. What I'm really focused on in my byline right now is committed to equity, empowerment, enrichment, and excellence for every student. I'm here to hear the thoughts and the ideas and the concerns from parents of both underperforming students, on-track students, as well as accelerated students. This is Oak Park. I feel like we have all the resources that we need to support everyone's needs here, and there's no reason why we can't figure this out, and I just really want to be a part of that conversation.
Thank you. Ashley?
Thank you. Hi there. I'm Ashley Lenz. I'm running for school board because I care about our community. I care about our children. My undergraduate studies at Notre Dame was focused on education, schooling, and societies. My master's degree, also from Notre Dame, was a master's in education that I earned while teaching middle school in Los Angeles. I've taught middle school as well as high school, so I've been in the classroom in lots of different capacities. I am also a parent, so my kids are poised to be in District 97 for at least the next 15 years. We might have more children. It might be longer than that. So I'm particularly invested in things like making sure our middle schools are safe and tackling bullying issues, making sure our reading and math programs are really robust for our students, and supporting our teachers, because, my goodness, they are dedicating their lives to educating our children. So I'm excited to be here. I'm happy to serve this community in whatever capacity I can. I'm super grateful to all my fellow candidates. You seem like really stellar folks, and I'm just excited we have this space to engage in conversations like the one we're having tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Becky?
Hi. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for hosting us. My name is Becky Perez. I am a trained school psychologist, mental health professional, mother, and self-identified Latina, and I really would love to serve in the community as a member of our school board. I am a resident of Oak Park. My kids are also Irving Eagles, so it's kind of nice to see representation from southeast Oak Park, as it has a lot of history, rich history. The community is lovely. I have also been employed in D-97, so I have a history as an insider, being able to at least understand some of the curricular decision-making, working alongside teachers, administrators. I know we have a lot of dedicated folks in the school district. I've also had the pleasure of now transitioning to the high school setting. Besides being a parent, I want to participate in public service, and I think this is one way I can do it.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start with our first question, and Vincent, you'll get the first started off. What is your opinion on the transparency of District 97 Board meetings? Do you feel issues and programs are discussed fully at the board table?
A great question, and I'm going to very much live in the middle of this. My experience is like a former administrator. I think there's this healthy balance between like, what is transparent decision-making and what actually needs to happen behind closed doors? And I think that it is hard to appeal both. So when I was administrator, especially when it was personnel issues, people always want to know like, what happened to this teacher? Why did we make this decision? And sometimes it wasn't always appropriate. So I think that there should be better guidelines around like, what's going to be closed session versus what's going to be open session? Because until that's very clear, no one will ever feel like they're getting all the information they need. I mean, it allows for there to be a little bit of tension or feeling like there's mistrust. But I think that we all go into it thinking that like, no one is on the board with bad intentions. No one is working for the district with bad intentions, but there is a little bit of like, perfect balance between like transparency, but also maintaining confidentiality, as well as just efficiency of decision-making.
Thank you. Venus?
So I do feel like there's transparency in our board meetings for as much as we can. When we're talking about closed session versus open session, closed session is specifically for personnel issues or student issues. So those are not things that we can share with the public. All other topics are on the table and available. We would put them on the agenda for our public meetings. So it is as transparent as we can have it be. We are following the guidelines as they have been outlined. But there's always room for improvement. We are always willing to be open to suggestions and topics. Some of that comes through Let's Talk. Some of it comes through conversations we've had with people out in the community. But I think all of us that serve on the board currently are very open to making sure that we are serving the public in the best way that we can and keeping that dialogue and that communication open.
Thank you. Twyla?
Hi. Yes, I actually, I feel like the school board has done a really good job with being transparent in the meetings and whatnot. I have been thinking about things as they relate to transparency and accountability, not so much with the board meetings, but just in offering more information that I'm not really sure if the school board has, or if the community just has not been able to gain access to, whether they haven't taken the time to look online, or if they haven't attended the school board meetings. But I would love to see the school board just give a little bit more data in these meetings, especially around different equity audits, school performance, student performance, so that parents in the community have a better understanding of the topics that they seem so riled up about in these Facebook groups. I think they just need a little bit more information so that they can articulate their preferences a little bit more.
Thank you. Ashley?
Thank you. Yeah, my sense, I moved to Oak Park in 2020. I've been reading the board meeting minutes and watching the board meetings and all of that. So my sense is that they've been pretty transparent. My sense, also like Twyla, on Facebook groups, is that a lot of parents don't know where to go for the information. Maybe the information they're looking for is like a little bit harder to find on the website. I think if you dig, if you know how to look for it, a lot of it is there. But maybe we could do a better job of communicating that outwards, or like putting some sort of outward-facing information for parents who are looking for the topics that they do get riled up about. So yeah, just as someone who's very much been outside of the board, who isn't involved in the politics of Oak Park except as an invested parent, my experience has that it's been transparent enough, but I have also been witness to a lot of the social media comments where parents have felt otherwise, so would want to address kind of where those concerns are coming from and explore those a little bit more. So, thanks.
Thank you. Becky?
I've also been able to see the hard work of the school board. Those meetings are very long. I do believe they're very thorough. I have seen them end at the wee hours of the night, and I, as a member of the community, I'm like, I'm going to stay on to watch this last piece. There's also, you know, I've never heard anyone say like, hurry it up, we're going to move on, you know, when it comes to like a topic. I do know things feel like there's no closure, and that makes it challenging for community members. But I think for me, my goal as a board member, future goal board member would be to try to close that loop of communication, ensure that folks that feel marginalized or feel that the communications are not reaching them, that there's other ways to kind of engage them in the conversation. But I do believe right now our school board is trying their best to address all issues.
Thank you. Nancy?
So I'm actually going to lead on from what Becky just said. We do have very long meetings. And as a usability consultant, one can also say that long and open doesn't always mean transparent for people to understand. So one of the things I've been very proud of, that both Venus and I worked hard to get for the board to do, is our board newsletter, which has gotten 10,000 opens now every time, and I think that was a really good start. I also appreciate the fact that this board has been at all the things, Berry Fest, A Day in Our Village. We try to be out and about in the community, and I've gotten stopped at the farmer's market. Please stop me at the farmer's market. I am happy to chat if I'm walking around the village, and I know that is the same of all the board members. We can always improve. I think we can always take a beat to make sure that we're getting that information out there in a way that people can understand and keep an eye on what people aren't understanding and see where we need to do a better job of communicating it.
Thank you. All right, the next question, we're going to start with Venus. "The Accelerated Placement Act calls for districts to develop a plan to expand access to its accelerated placement program and to ensure the teaching capacity necessary to meet the increased demand. How will you, as a board member, hold the district administration accountable to this guidance?"
We have talked about this acceleration program for a few board meetings, and I have to say I'm very proud of, in particular, math has been the place where acceleration has lived the most vigorously. So I'm very proud of our math departments, both at the elementary school and the middle school, because they have made these adjustments two or three times related to trying to align with the math offerings at the high school so that kids can be exposed to calculus. It's sort of the, is now the end-all and be-all for making you the best candidate for college. So we really have done our best to make sure that we can accelerate our students who need it and make algebra and/or calculus available to those students who want to be able to take it. So I do think that we are really working hard to make sure that our acceleration meets the needs of each student who wants to accelerate and access to that acceleration.
Thank you. Twyla?
I agree. I myself, as a quantitative researcher, rely a lot on math. I also attended the Illinois Math and Science Academy, so I understand parents' concerns about having access to accelerated programming, enrichment programs, and things of that nature. And I really want all students who are very interested in math or other subjects at an accelerated level to have opportunities as well. I do, however, believe that the schools can really only offer so many classes, especially as we get, you know, when we start thinking about the number of students that would be in these accelerated programs or super-accelerated programs, it becomes a little bit smaller, and we start dealing with the economies of scale, right? It's hard to provide this strong curriculum for a smaller number of students. And so what I would like to see is the middle school be able to work with some of our other educational programming, like the library, and maybe some of other volunteers or after-school programming, to be able to support these students. I'm also really interested in seeing the schools develop classes that are still focused on the same math classes that are available at Julian, but digging in deeper. So these accelerated students would be able to still do the middle school math, eighth grade, ninth grade math, but they would be taught it at a more analytical and theoretical approach, right? They will understand a deeper level of math before they move on to high school, and then they can accelerate on to statistics or calculus, et cetera.
Thank you. Ashley?
Yeah, I would say my biggest concern is just the fact that these accelerated placement programs can honestly be life-changing for students. I know my husband has his PhD in mathematics, and he got there because Evanston, like, high school or in middle school pushed him into accelerated classes at a young age. He wouldn't be where he is as a researcher without that. I know for myself, like, getting into top colleges was deeply based upon those accelerated programs. I also know as a teacher that it's possible to differentiate within a class. I could have students at different levels and reach those different levels within that classroom. That doesn't always show in a transcript, however, which is often what colleges and admissions are looking at. So really getting creative, trying to figure out ways that students can feel challenged, they can feel passionate about the subjects that they're interested in, and can explore those at high levels, while also finding ways to communicate out to colleges, to places that our kids are applying to, to show that they really do have those skills in the background that they need to be successful in future pathways.
Thank you. Becky?
So I have a unique perspective. I've actually been behind the scenes when referrals have been made for acceleration. I've been able to work alongside family members, teachers that are referring students for acceleration. So I've been able to see just the evolution of this process. I do believe there's constant communication about what's next. I do believe that our district is trying to also align with changes that are happening at the high school level. And now that I'm here at the high school level, I do believe that, once kids get here, there is a wide range of curricular options that I don't know necessarily enough to say that we are not advancing enough in the elementary schools. If anything, I believe we're trying to create better collaboration between the schools. I'll also mention, just as another insider perspective, my own child participated in SMART, which is one way that we're trying to get kids to have access to other ways to learn outside of just the classroom setting. So there are things that I feel like our elementary school district is trying to do, and I'd like to give them a chance to show us the wide range.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hi. So as a parent who actually went through the acceleration process many, many moons ago, I appreciate Becky's point about the evolution of the process. I think the district is doing a much better job now of clarity in how you can go through acceleration. And then to Venus and Twyla's point, the other component of acceleration is access, is the ability to actually get to your best math, to the top, and be challenged in your math. We just had a very long conversation at the board table about looking at new K-5 curriculum for math, because one of the points we brought up is you can't squeeze it all into middle school. You got to start at the front end to make sure that everybody has the solid basis to do the things like, I love the ideas of after-school programming. I love the ideas of an extra class. One of the things I brought up was being able to challenge kids. Do you have to move ahead, or do you just want to go deeper? Like, these are the questions we really need to ask of our students to support them in math.
Thank you. Vincent?
Yeah, thank you. It's awkward being the last person. I mean, I love the acceleration program. So our eighth grader jumped from fifth grade math to seventh grade math, and it was a good experience, great for his academic self-esteem. I think there actually could be more support for kids who make that leap, because I think the on-ramp was they got the Acceleration Path T3, and then the summer program. But what we saw was that first quarter, first trimester, there were just some gaps that like, just couldn't, you can't cover an entire year with the on-ramp. So I think you could actually pour more resource into supporting that cohort of kids, because I think the unintended consequence was that teacher who inherited that group had to switch to rigor a little bit, because the kids just weren't ready. Like, they got this crash course to be accelerated. Then, once they were there, you saw the frustration on both sides. So the idea is that, how do we accelerate kids, but also make sure they're progressing at the ability that they are, so everyone can still succeed?
Okay, thank you. Twyla, you're going to start the next question. "How do you respond to issues surrounding the differences in what families experience at the middle school theater programs? There are many families who choose to live in the Brooks District for the Bravo program. And if we are one district, how can we respond to ensure our students have similar opportunities?"
Well, I would just like to say that Zariah began her musical theater at Irving in its Eagle Extras program after school, and Daphne just began either. So in fifth grade, she started musical theater at Julian, and she was Shrek. She was Shrek, and it was an amazing production. I've been to the Bravo productions. I've been to the Cass productions. I even was on the Cass Parenting Advisory Board for a couple of years. And I really believe that both programs are really good programs. Zariah attended their summer programs as well. She's also volunteered. They both put on amazing productions. What I would really like to see and hope that parents would pay a little bit more attention to is more diversity of students participating in the musical theater programs at the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. We would love to see more gentlemen being involved. We would love to see students of other income groups and racial groups that are very underrepresented as well. And this would allow the programming to expand even more at both schools. They'd be able to do bigger plays or different plays, but it's really hard right now because it's, you know, trying to get parents to push their students more towards musical theater than, of course, the sports and things of that nature. So I really don't see much difference in both of the programs. And both students, they go from Bravo to Julian. They do very well at the high school in the theater programs, and many of them are also studying at Ovation, which is a programming at the Madison Street Theater. So I love both programs. I don't think that we should put them against each other. I would actually love to see them maybe do something together, but I think both musical theater programs are very, very good. And we would really love to see just more parents kind of maybe pushing their children towards getting on stage and dancing, singing their hearts away.
Thank you. Ashley?
I just loved hearing how passionate Twyla is about it. I did musical theater all four years of high school and loved it. We also had the perennial problem of not having enough guys for whatever musical we wanted to put on and had to pivot for whatever roles we could do, or girls playing whatever roles we could get them to do. So yeah, just love all of that. I love how robust the programs here are. We've been to some of those shows and have really enjoyed them. My four-year-old has really enjoyed them. I really think, obviously, wanting to make sure all the programs here get similar access to resources and all of those sorts of things. But I really, as a student who was involved in musical theater, like, when we put so much emphasis on sports, when we celebrate and have pep rallies and all these things around the sports teams, and we don't give that same sort of celebration to the success of our musical theater productions, I think that's when things start to not get as much dedicated to them. So I think just finding ways to celebrate the programs, to really elevate the fact that there are places where you can develop leadership skills, confidence, all sorts of things that are so useful for our students going forward. I'm going over time because I'm also passionate about the musical theater. So yeah, I definitely think just really elevating the way that we talk about these programs in all of our schools to get more students involved and get the resources there.
Thank you. Becky?
I think this is a great question. Obviously, all of them have some depth. Great question in the sense that it's not just about the feeder schools, going into the middle school and seeing differences in availability of programming. I think something that's been unique about Oak Park is that if, and I do have an opportunity to have been in all buildings, got a sense to whether, you know, the size of the building, the size of the staff, you know, the amount of programming offered after school. So I think this kind of draws attention to the fact that each school in our district, not just between Julian and Brooks, each have their own character, their own sense of community, their own PTO that runs programs that are connected to what meets the needs. So I'd love to tap in more into this topic, just in general, to do an assessment of how we make decisions about what's available. I was at Lincoln, and there was a Spanish immersion program there. So, and that could be very controversial for very many reasons, but I do think I had an experience of what it looked like to have a program in one school out of many.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hi. So one of the things I love about Oak Park is the commitment to the arts, because we know education research shows again and again how important the arts are for children and making them successful students and successful later in life. So I am proud to see that one of the pieces that having a new superintendent of middle schools, assistant superintendent of middle schools buys us, is actually coordination between those two schools. As they are looking at the redesign of the school day, I know some of the notes that they have heard are that students would like to be able to maybe take different arts, like not take one type all year round, but have a chance to do performing arts and graphic arts and musical arts. And I think this will actually show, as we move into the new school year design and the new work there, that we will also see those in our after-school programs, because there's more coordination to share. Hey, what's the best practice here? How are you doing this? Oh, hey, how can we share these pieces and really work together?
Thank you. Venus? I'm sorry, Vincent, my...
I thought it was me, but I... Can you repeat the question again? I got lost.
Absolutely. Where was I? Oh, as... "How do you respond to the issues surrounding the differences in what families experience at their middle school theater programs? There are many families who choose to live in the Brooks District for the Bravo program. If we are one district, how can we respond?" If we are one district, how can we respond to ensure our students have similar opportunities?
Right. Well, full transparency, we're a Brooks family, and our son did Bravo. So to Twila's point, like, he enjoyed it. It's been a great experience for him. I think that, I think that one of the ways you can mitigate that, we were at Future Husky Night for our rising ninth grader, and I was blown away at the number of like clubs and activities. Like, there was like a billion clubs. And I think that Bravo was great. But when most, when Julian and Brooks have roughly about fifteen to twenty activities, Bravo becomes this thing that everyone globes onto. I wish there was actually a way to expand programming. So you actually had more clubs and activities, because one of the great things that the ninth grade counselor said, he was like, hey, if you can think about it, we can create it. I think that if there is a way to create more programming for middle school kids, but also, I think, to Ashley's point, break down the walls of like some collaboration programs between both schools. I think that alleviates some of the strain, people feeling like, we're not a blank school. They have this. It's like, well, no, you're gonna have a similar experience no matter where you go, because there's gonna be a club or an activity that's gonna cater to the kids.
Thank you. Venus?
I think I'm gonna take a little bit of a historical perspective as a parent and as a board member. I think that there was a time when there was a vast difference between the shows through Cast and the shows through Bravo. I do not think that exists anymore. I think those shows, the level of production in those shows is unbelievable. And I've heard out-of-towners share that, both Bravo and Cast. So I, I think no matter what school you choose, your, your child is, if they're interested in the theater, they're gonna have a great experience. And we have worked hard to make sure that both of those programs have the same resources and are operating on a level playing field. Whenever there is an idea for a club, if you want to create it, have it. I have seen clubs come to the middle schools. I've seen them come to the elementary schools. As long as they have support and have a plan and are there, or something that that school desires, we can make those things happen. We are a very nimble district in, from that regard, and we are pretty well-resourced to make those things happen. So that's my answer.
Thank you. Ashley, next question. How, as a board member, how would you address the increasing incidence of anxiety in teens?
Such a huge issue. My work now actually is a lot involved in helping with mental health with teens and mindfulness. So this is something that I'm in this world a lot in my work day to day. Obviously, access to like mental health counselors, access to social emotional learning within the classroom, giving them the tools that they need to deal with those anxieties when they come up, but also giving them a clear protocol or resources to access when they do feel like they need that extra help and they need to reach out to someone to really get them plugged into whatever help they need. I also think it like comes down a lot to creating a strong school culture, making school feel like a place where kids are safe, where they know that they're loved, that they know that they're seen, they know that they're known. That comes down to their teachers, but also like their classmates. And building that culture like takes years. I know I've heard from fellow parents about issues at the middle school level in particular. But just really starting to build up that culture of inclusion and belonging for all of our students. And I think it starts with, I mean, kind of like rituals and school identity and just building up that around the kids.
Thank you. Becky?
So as a practicing school psychologist and as a former employee of D ninety-seven, I can say that we have a dedicated staff of school social workers and psychologists. We have culture, we have coaches at the middle school level on top of our administrators. And a lot of our administrators also have had either a teaching background. We have Irving the privilege of having a social worker that worked within the district. So I think Oak Park really had a big change right before the pandemic, in which we increased a lot of our staff in the mental health profession. We really valued that. I think we've been able to sustain that. I think it's about making sure that families are aware of the resources that are available and how we make decisions to make them available. I also believe anxiety is one of the growing areas of concern for all parents. Part of it is, we live in a very competitive society, and to some extent, our community is that way. So we have to balance between how much of it is developmental, how much of it is a product of where we live, and also are we tapping into the resources that are available to us, which we do have many.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hi. So as Becky noted, we do have a very strong staff at D ninety-seven to support our students. On top of that, it's the other pieces that can make the difference sometimes. So the board gave direction, for example, to smooth the transition between elementary, where you're in a smaller classroom, with a little bit more, you know, hand-holding into middle school. And the administration ran with that, worked with teachers to actually create a middle school bridge, which by all accounts has been wildly successful. All students walk out with at least a couple of friends, and one of the goals is to make sure that they at least have two adults they know in the building that they feel comfortable with. And I think that that is critical. Another piece is to make connections outside of school. And this is where all the collaboration with the park district, with the township, with making sure that we are making use of all of Oak Park's resources, not just D ninety-seven, to the benefit of our students is really very critical for our students' anxiety and, and mental health.
Thank you. Vincent?
Yeah, I think it's like, how do we also just embrace the current research that's out there? I'll do a plug. The Angstuous Generation is the best book that I've read in the last five years. Like, I read it. I've recommended it to everyone. Easy plug. We're doing a book club reading at Whittier for the first week of March, and it talks about the rise in anxiety and mental health concerns with kids directly correlated to when kids got smartphones. And so I think there's a little bit of like, how do we own it? The research is there and it's very clear. I think it's also like within a school day, how do we make sure that like, the district is used, is purchased SEL curriculum? How do we make sure that that SEL curriculum is actually like working for kids as well? Also, are there outside providers, like companies like Open Seat, where we can buy a block of mental health seats for kids. So if a kid needs support, they can just go into an app and talk to a therapist in real time. So I think there's ways we can do wraparound support to help kids with the anxiety they're feeling.
Thank you. Venus?
I think school culture is really, really important. Each of our elementary schools have their own school culture, and there's a lot of school pride. And then you get to the middle school and your culture shifts. And Nancy talked about those transitions and how important they are. And we've known that we've had some gaps and some struggles with those transitions. And we, as a board, have really focused on that and asked the administration to try to solve for that with the, the bridge, the middle school bridge, which was wildly successful over the summer. But I also, we have, again, the supports in the school. We were working, we have a partnership program with DePaul, with DePaul University and their mental health, some of their mental health professionals. We also are now beginning to tap into the Oak Park Mental Health Board. Kids always need a soft landing, whether that is a mental health professional, or a psychologist, or an administrator, or even a teacher. If every kid knows that there is someone in that building that cares about them, then that can make or break their day. If they're having a bad day and they can go talk to that person, that really can make the difference in their experience. And last plug, we do measure their sense of belonging at each of our schools. At the beginning of the school, I think we do it twice. Of course, the name of it's gonna escape me. But that's really important for us to gauge where our kids are and where we want to take them.
Thank you. Twila?
Yes, I think all of the other panelists have mentioned some really great ideas, so I'm not gonna repeat those. What I've been thinking a lot about is how we can collaborate a little bit more with the resources that are already available in our community. The main library has a really, really dope spot, right? The teenage floor, and Daphne and I are in the library all the time. And that floor is empty so many days, and they have so many great resources up there. Video games is a really nice setup. What if when students got there after school or on the weekends to do some work, that there may have, there may be volunteer therapists? There may be volunteer social workers, or there may be just older students there to be able to offer their support and their guidance in different ways. I like to consider myself a gentle parent, right? So I do promote a lot of talking and expressive behaviors. And I feel like these students just need more places to be able to do that. And we can really draw on the CRC. We can draw on the YMCA, the library, to give them those spaces. I also feel like it would be great if we can give parents some resources for when they're at home and how to even just maybe approach the topic of what could be bothering them and potential solutions and things of that nature. And really fast last one, I am very big on sending my kid like TikToks and Instagrams that just have positive messages or different influencers that are focused specifically on that age group. We need to give them access in a way that they're, that they are willing to access their cell phones, right? How can we use those cell phones as tools to help support them? Because there's so many resources.
Thank you. Becky, you'll start this next question. Last year, with strong bipartisan support, Illinois published the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan to guide districts in evidence-based reading methods. Do you support the district making it a strategic priority to align with the plan? And how will you elevate this priority and put resources behind it to support teacher development, curriculum needs, assessment, and support services?
This could be somebody's dissertation. So, and, and I can honestly say that I can appreciate that question. It's on everyone's mind. I think in the last two years, the publications around our previous curriculum was something that was controversial, but also eye-opening. I think it allowed for parents, community members, educators alike to almost be aligned in a way about reading and be very informed, excited, asking critical questions. So I, I'm excited for this question. I think we're headed in the right direction. I think it's gonna be about transparency, professional development for teachers, and ensuring that the schools that are piloting the three curriculums at this time in literacy, again, is happening. It's happening at Irving. I'm getting the materials at home. I'm picking up on the differences. But I'm also an educated parent, meaning like, I have a doctorate in school psychology. So I want to make sure that when we're making decisions, teachers feel confident they know what they're going to embrace, that it's culturally responsive, and that families can understand what were the differences. How do I know this works? So evidence has to also come from our community.
Thank you. Nancy?
So I want to emphasize the importance of that last point, that evidence needs to come from our community. Because the plan, the, the state literacy plan is good. It's, it's very top level. And it's not, it needs some, some testing locally behind it. So I'm actually, I guess, it could take a dissertation to actually explain the history of literacy in the district. I know we put into place a literacy program that was later proven to have issues. We put it in without testing in the district. We have learned from that mistake. And I will say that when Venus and I came on, one of the things we came on with is we need to be testing any curriculum before we're spending money and putting it into the classroom for our students. Because even if it's the best curriculum, does it work for our students? And so I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that we are actually working with a group of forty teachers, not just the admin in a building selecting something, and actually piloting these in our own classrooms to pick programs that will actually work for our students in Oak Park.
Thank you. Vincent?
No, this is a great question, and this is where I spend the bulk of my day. So I work for an organization called On Your Mark, where we do virtual literacy tutoring based on the science of reading. So I would say that I probably talk about the science of reading a little less than a thousand times a day. And I, and I think it's important for schools to be aligned. I think that the other concern when you have kids who are struggling reading, if kids are not reading on grade level by the end of third grade, they're four times less likely to graduate from high school, as well as, once you get to fourth grade, curriculums across the country assume you know how to read. So we are seeing this cliff of kids not being able to access material. And from the equity standpoint, parents who have money will be able to circumvent bad curriculum, because they can always pay. But I think we should be able to make sure we have a curriculum that like, regardless of where you live in the village, whether you're a homeowner or a renter, you can go to school and be taught how to read and be a proficient reader by the end of second grade, so you can access all the other opportunities that are provided by the district.
Thank you. Venus?
I want to talk about the pilots for a second. I think it's really important for us to have our own research and to know the teachers spent a lot of time on picking a curriculum, deciding what supplements they needed, where the curriculum had strengths, where the curriculum had some holes, and making sure that they filled those holes with additional resources. Those teachers who are piloting these programs will become champions in their building, and they will become teacher leaders. And then they will create other champions in each of their schools. So once we decide on a curriculum and we move with that, we, we've already got some seeds planted to help that curriculum glow and grow and blossom. But I think that the curriculum is only one part of it. In kindergarten and in first grade, you have to identify any challenges that those students may be facing and give them the interventions and the resources to help them overcome those challenges, so that they can be strong readers. And we have the resources to do that. We just have to be very diligent about identifying those students and providing them with the right resources when they need them.
Thank you. Twila?
Thank you for this question. I really have been enjoying watching Daphne be so excited about reading Otter every day at Irving, right? Literacy is a really big deal. As a college professor, I really, really do value early literacy, because they have to be able to develop early on critical thinking and finding ways to be able to engage with materials that they're excited in, right? When, I remember going through the phase when Zaria just wanted to read graphic novels. And I was okay with that, because it was something she wanted to read. It was something that really drew her in. And we have to find a way that stu-, that can help students just feel more comfortable with the things that they are reading in. And I think that this takes me to my next point, which is talking more to students. We spend a lot of time asking parents about their thoughts and ideas about literacy and curriculum. But I think this is one of the areas where we could really kind of chime in and ask the students, even as young as kindergartners, what do they want to read? How do they feel when they're reading? And using this information then to be able to support the professional development of teachers as well. I really think that we have to give students a bigger voice in their own education. Because as you can see, as small as they are, they have thoughts, and they will share them if we ask them.
Thank you. Ashley?
Thank you. Yeah, I have been following the pilot programs really closely. I've been really impressed, actually, with how they've been rolled out and how they've been explored. My background is as an English teacher. I started out teaching middle school English in Compton in Los Angeles. A lot of my students were very far behind reading level. I did not expect to be teaching students how to read. But that was the reality of my classroom at that time. So I ended up going to my fellow students who were doing elementary education and asking them to teach me how to teach kids how to read. So this is close to my heart and close to my own background. It's also so hard to remediate when kids fall behind in reading. So that's also like so important to keep them on track early on. I have my opinions about which curriculum I like best from the three that are being piloted, but obviously, I'm interested to see how it plays in our schools and what our teachers like. We want the curriculum to work for our students. Also want it to work for our teachers to feel like they still have freedom to explore the love of reading and to cultivate that in addition to the skills needed for reading. And then increasing just access to books and other like soft things, like not curriculum, but things surrounding students that really promote the desire to read and the eagerness to read, including if that's graphic novels or whatever else that starts that, that kernel of love of reading.
Thank you. Nancy, you're gonna start this next question. How do you think the current superintendent is doing?
That is a very broad question. I'm just gonna throw that out there. I think that we have a lot coming out of the pandemic. We transitioned superintendents just as we were coming out of a very, honestly, collectively traumatic event for everybody. And I think she has been doing a good job of making sure that as we're doing this, we're doing it together. I mentioned before with the pilot testing that she's working with teachers to actually select pieces. The same has been seen with the K five math presentation that was recently made, for example. And I appreciate, because I do think one of the biggest things that we as a district need to work on is all the adults in the room working together. And by that, I mean, parents, teachers, administration. We all have to be those legs on the stool, sitting on top of the community to carry the metaphor through for our students. And I think that direction that she is headed is, is doing a good job.
Thank you. Vincent?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that when she didn't give the kids a snow day last week, her popularity probably dropped a bit. But for the most part, I think, I think she's doing a good job. I think that it is, you can never make everyone happy in that role, especially the diverse perspectives. especially the diverse perspectives and needs of our entire district. I think that there's always this knee-jerk reaction when one thing goes wrong or a certain group doesn't get their way of like, let's change this. And as an avid sports fan, you see that like you need stability and leadership. And like even when you see in schools, like generally schools with the best outcomes are schools that have had the principals stay for at least six years. That's when you see excellence. The same for districts. I think we've got someone who seems to be very committed to Oak Park and is going to learn and grow in the role. And I think that I'd love to join the board to be support. But I think as right now, like we've got the person who can really help us become one of the best districts in the nation, and we should continue on this path.
Thank you. Venus?
Yeah, this is an interesting question and from Nancy and I who work so closely with the superintendent. We were, when we looked at bringing on a superintendent, we knew that Dr. Shaw was coming to our district, not having had any superintendent experience. One of her strengths is that she is really good at identifying sort of the gaps operationally and coming up with systems that will help improve our district as a whole so that we can move and work more smoothly. And that affects in the district office, in the school buildings, and that absolutely, absolutely affects the kids. Dr. Shaw has really implemented a lot of important processes. She's giving a lot of exposure to the teachers, particularly to us at the board with each school sharing their school improvement plan with a specific focus on the focal cohort, which is Black and Brown students. So I do think she's doing a great job. I think she is going to continue to do a great job. I want to be alongside her to make that happen. And I have enjoyed working with her. So I look forward to doing it for another four years.
Thank you. Twyla?
Yes, I have heard plenty of good things about the current superintendent as a professor of political science. And I've learned and well, research shows that a lot of people who have really strong opinions about policies often don't understand the roles that people play. And I think that many people don't always understand the job of the superintendent, right? And so, and I think that's where we see some of the comments coming from amongst the public. But as mentioned here, these last few years have been a really interesting time to educate children, but also to supervise and manage schools as well. And I have seen some consistency. I've seen improvements in some areas. There are definitely some areas where obviously parents are really, really still concerned about. We're talking about safety at the middle school. We're talking about more engagement of those groups and communities that are underrepresented or feel a little bit excluded from the system, particularly some of our local Black and Latino families. These are all areas that need a little bit more support. But I do feel like the superintendent has been pushing OP ninety-seven in a really good direction in all of the areas that have been mentioned so far.
Thank you. Ashley?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it is not a job that I would want or one that I envy. So I have a lot of respect for the role that she plays and the work that she's done in the few years that she's been in that role. As others have mentioned, it does seem like there's just often no winning in that kind of position. And even with all that, I've heard a lot of positive things, a lot of talk on social media, a lot of talk from other moms of the playground that have been largely positive. So I really appreciate all of that. It occurs to me that we've talked a lot about school cultures in a lot of different areas tonight. And really the superintendent, when they're able to be there long-term consistently, there's not a lot of turnover. They get to lead that school culture. I think we're still early on in Dr. Shaw's tenure. So there's a lot of time to continue to build that, but I think we're heading in the right direction. And it just takes time to slowly unpack and unwind a lot of the issues that people have raised. So yeah, I think she's doing great. I think she's going to continue working on things. And I think we're all eager to support her in this community however we can.
Thank you. Becky?
I think this is also another really big topic in the community, especially the, the previous school year. If you watched any of the board meetings, I appreciate our incumbents here because that, that was tough to watch as a community member. I think there were many times when Dr. Shaw had to kind of keep her composure and, you know, stand in crowd and stand out and kind of stand on her own two feet regarding some really critical decisions about changes. And I, I think that it was a really hard position to be in, to have to backtrack a little bit when it comes to decision-making. But it also spoke to how we're trying to listen to community. So that's my emphasis. And that was the teacher community, the, the parent community. So that was hard. It was hard to watch. So I don't envy her position, but I understand that being a leader requires taking some risks. So our role as school board members is to also hold her accountable. So if this is the direction we're heading to continue to, you know, develop this relationship with Dr. Shaw, then I would like to be able to enhance those relationships again between community, teachers, and the superintendent. And that's our role.
Thank you. Vincent, you're going to get this next question first. What are the most pressing issues facing this office of school board? And how would you propose to address them?
Yeah, I think it's the same issue from the test of time. I think it's equity of academic outcomes. And I think that that's always going to be, that's always going to be one of the top two priorities when you're serving a diverse community. If we were a different demographic, equity could easily be fall down the list. So I think equity of outcomes. I also think middle school. All go a different flyer. I think the middle schools are, are better places than we give them credit for. Like our eighth graders had an amazing experience. I think there's some, there are some families who are having horrible experiences. And we hear a lot about those, but I think there's also times when like, we could probably hire a PR firm to like spotlight all the great things they're having at the middle school. So I think because the toughest thing you're doing is that people love their elementary schools. Because it tells me where you live. It tells me about, a little bit about you. But people feel very disconnected from the middle schools because also our kids are kind of old, but not really. So I think how do we focus on equity, but also focus on like the middle school brand? And how do we make it more welcoming for families?
Thank you. Venus?
Um, yeah, this is a broad question. I think there's a lot of things to, that we need to focus on. I think one of the things that we have attacked, and we've talked about it a little bit earlier, is those transitions. The transition from sixth grade to seventh grade, or fifth grade to sixth grade, because you're changing schools. That's when you start the middle school. But also the transition from eighth grade into high school. And I serve on the community council as a board liaison. So I am seeing the communication between D ninety-seven admin and OPRF admin to make sure that those incoming students, that they are in the right classes. What are those classes? What's the right fit for them? What do they, what do, what baseline education and exposure experience do they need in elementary school and middle school in order to prepare them for high school? So Dr. Shaw has a portrait of a graduate, which has been sort of the, the pinnacle of what we want our D ninety-seven students to be. And that's really important. There's a lot of other things that are, are also very important, certainly are the safety of our students and their sense of belonging. But I'll stop there for now.
Thank you. Twyla?
I was very excited when I heard Vincent's response because we also had a very positive experience at Julian, and we know many other families that have positive experiences at Julian. And I do sometimes wonder if the middle schools kind of catch all the heat, if I can say it in that particular way. When I think about schooling in Oak Park or schooling anyway, I think of like a time glass on the side, right? Elementary schools, like this big fun experience. We go movie nights and we have school fairs and things of that nature. And as Vincent pointed out, when our kids get to middle school, we don't have that same kind of, of a direct access with their everyday events, or even with their class, their homeworks as much. And I think that that may make parents feel a little less excited about their kids' middle school experiences. I do know that there are some issues at the middle school that do really need to be addressed. And a big one of those is safety. We really have to help these kids deal with their emotions so that they can handle them in a much more healthier manner, so that they can be productive in the school building. But I do feel like parents and community members maybe can just support our middle schools a little bit more so that they can have the community support, community engagement that they need to help our students during a really tough time, if we're honest with ourselves.
Thank you. Ashley?
Yeah, I, so I taught middle school, obviously. I love my middle schoolers, but I'm always struck by the fact that Maria Montessori has all these plans for all these different ages, and she gets to middle school and she says, maybe send them to a farm for a few years. So just a tough age. I'm so empathetic and sympathetic to that reality. I'm going to hit again on just the school culture and the fact we, we have a lot of students in our district, and that's wonderful because we're so well-resourced because we have all these students. I think the elementary schools often thrive because they're smaller. I've heard, we, we're in Lincoln. Great things about the Spanish immersion program because it is a smaller school within a bigger school and kids can be known. I think you get to the bigger middle school, schools, and that gets harder for kids to be known. It gets harder to create that sense of identity for parents to feel plugged in, for kids to be placed into the right accelerated programs that they need to be placed into. Like I think all of these are kind of connected to, we have a lot of students, they need to be known and seen and welcomed into this culture. And how do we really build a strong sense of community that plugs into the library, that plugs into the park district, that gets parents and all these stakeholders involved? There's no easy answers there, obviously, but I really think that's at the heart of a lot of the issues we're talking about.
Thank you. Becky?
Can you repeat the question?
What is the most pressing, what are the most pressing issues facing this board office? How do you propose to address them?
Okay, no. There's lots of things. I've heard a lot, and I would probably be very much in agreement that there's a lot of discussion about the middle schools. Sure. But I do think, like anything else, students come first. So I do feel like there's a sense of ensuring that we're thinking about all students. How do we do that every single time we come together, right? We're looking at data, which I do feel like we're consistently checking back into the achievement gap. How students are falling further behind versus others that want to be accelerated is a hard conversation to have. So I do feel like top priorities for us is continuing to have conversations about achievement and how our students are running through our schools and those experiences. I also think I'm very fond of each unique culture that we have. And I think making sure that our teachers and our students are happy in those spaces and are being heard is also really critical. And how we offer them opportunities to do that is one of the top priorities I would have.
Thank you. Nancy?
So one of the difficult parts of the being on the board is picking the pressing issue out of all the pressing issues. For me, I have to say it's still equity. I'm going to use a sports metaphor, which is always dicey. But we've bought a ticket to the game. We've started getting prepared to take our seats. We have the Black Excellence Oak Park, uh, Black Excellence Teaching in Oak Park Group. We have our focal cohorts. We're really starting to get there, but we're not there yet. We have a ways to go. And to me, every other issue lies on top of that issue. If you can't address that, the rest of it kind of goes to the wayside. We, we have to address that. And I will say, is especially critical in the current backdrop we're working against. I think looking at stability over the next four years in the face of constant, hey, we're going to take your lunch money away. Hey, we're gonna send people to your school. Hey, we're going to do this. I think making sure that we are looking out for our students who most need our support and our families is one of the most pressing issues right now.
Thank you. Venus, you're going to get this next question first. Testing is part of school culture now. But does District ninety-seven do too much, enough, too little? What in your estimation is the appropriate level of testing students for outcomes, for anything?
I'm not sure I know what the appropriate level of testing is. I can see where someone might feel like we're doing too much testing. But in order for us to know where we need to go, we have to set a goal. And testing allows us to see where we are in terms of achieving that goal. It also allows us to see where our students are, those at the top, and then those in the middle, and those at the bottom, and what resources need to be adjusted for each of those students wherever they fall. So I think testing is really important. I know it's not fun. But the, the value in what comes out of that testing is the only way that we are going to get better in serving our students and even serving our teachers. I think testing also helps us to improve our teaching professionals and what they're doing in their classrooms. It also can identify what professional development they may need. So I think there's two sides of testing that are really important, the student side as well as the teaching professional side that allow us to know where we are and where we need to go.
Thank you. Twyla?
So testing, testing, testing. I tell my students assessments are needed. As pointed out, we need them so that we know where we've been and where we are going. My biggest concern about testing is not so much if the students are being tested too much or too little, or too little, but being able to give the parents the resources that they need to support their students once those testing results come in, right? No parent wants to consistently see that their children are struggling with these standardized tests over and over again. And we, we get the, the paper with the bar charts and all of that good stuff, but then we're not really given instructions on what to do thereafter. What can we do with our children thereafter? How can we enrich the parents to support their students more? I think this is a really big issue, and it also brings us back to equity. I refuse to believe that Black and Latino students in Oak Park are just not performing at the same level as their peers, especially when they've been in the school system for the same amount of time, right? That just doesn't make any sense. I really believe that a big issue here is trying to enrich the parents, provide more resources for parents so that they can support their students appropriately outside of the classroom. And so my biggest hangup with testing is to give parents support after the test.
Thank you. Ashley?
Yeah, for me, I think it really comes down to how we're using the testing, if it's being implemented, if it's being put into practice. I think in a lot of ways it is when I look at the, when I watch the board meetings or look at the meeting notes, like we are using the testing, the research, everything to kind of help inform our decisions, and that's great. I think to Twilight's point, I think often parents receive the testing reports as sort of like a postmortem of like, this is why, what is the autopsy? What's going on? And it's always like, or not always, but often just seen as like, well, that's what happened anyways, rather than as like a living formative to help direct where that student is going next. I think unfortunately, not that I know of in Oak Park, but I think for some teachers, like it's also a postmortem for them of like, well, I tried to teach that. It didn't work. This is why the patient died. And then moving on, rather than like, how do we go back and actually care for the patient and make sure that they get the resources that they need? So I think just really communicating out the test results in a way that is helpful to teachers, to stakeholders, to the board, to parents, to everybody involved so that they can, the kids aren't testing for no reason and waste, not wasting all the time, but doing all that time doing the testing in a way that's actually going to be useful for people who are trying to help and support them.
Thank you. Becky?
So this is my bread and butter. So I definitely, I'm just going to try to keep it concise. But the, the biggest pieces that I think, I, I definitely agree with a lot of the points that have been made. I appreciate everybody's perspectives. I think all of these could be shared. As a parent, I know that one of the most important things is building a relationship with my child's teacher. I know that from just working alongside a struggling reader. But for me, coming to the table and having a lot of information was really useful, most recently in identifying my child with a disability. So I can appreciate as a parent what that means to have all of this information. There was a time when there was a change where there was no data available for the spring, and that was a district-wide decision. And I needed that because I needed to know how my kid was doing. I am more on the end of like appreciating numbers. So I think one of the dilemmas we're going to have to address and continue to have conversations is how much time kids are spending taking tests? If teachers feel confident in interpreting the results? And then how does it address equity in terms of bias? So we use numbers so we can take the anecdotal data out. Or how can we combine it to do qualitative observation and numbers to be more equitable in our decisions?
Thank you. Nancy?
So heading on that same theme, going back to what Venus said, that, that testing allows us to see where our students are. And unfortunately, some of the testing is required by the state that doesn't always give us the detailed information that we need. And even combining it with day-to-day classroom practice, to Becky's point, you can't take these tests. Oh, that's it. You're done. But now we have all the information we need. It's got to be part of a bigger piece. And I will say, one of the things that I've been proud of in being in the district is that we supported the hiring of a data specialist. And it's been very gratifying to see teachers actually overhear them saying, it's so exciting. I just called Anna. I had some questions about my student and I was able to get the data and go through it. So we're doing an okay job on that, but to Twilight's point, we're not always doing a great job with parents. And what is this in families? What is And what is this in families? What does this actually mean? Like, how does this help me support my student? How can we work together? And it goes back to my question before of, I think we really need to all be working together. And that goes with things like how we're, how we're helping our students based on what we're seeing in testing and in the classroom.
Thank you. Vincent?
Yeah, I'll go middle of the road here. I think testing's a, it's a necessary evil. It's similar to checking your bank account. Like, you gotta know where kids are because if, if reading results tank, everyone's gonna be like, how do we not know this? Um, but you also don't wanna overtest kids. They didn't get testing is appropriate. As long as we're using the results to drive instructional decis- decisions. But also to everyone else's point, to make sure that like, it's changing school vision. So like, is that means that like, these second grade teachers are doing something different T2 based on the results they got in T1? Um, the other perspective is my kids love testing, like, they love it. Because their perspective is the day before the test, there's no homework. The day of the test, there's no homework. So they see testing as like a sabbatical they get a couple of times a year. So they don't want testing to go away at all.
Wow. Okay, the next question, um, fiscal responsibility. You have all these great programs, we have all these great programs in Oak Park. Um, how do you balance those great programs with being fiscally responsible to a community that is, you know, you live here, you know what the taxes are. So how do you balance that, um, all that good programming with being fiscally responsible? And Twyla, you are kicking this one off.
Oh, yay. This is a big question. This is a very big question. I've lived in Oak Park as a renter. I've lived in Oak Park as a homeowner. So I do, uh, feel like I've kind of experienced the conversation from both sides. I really think that Oak Park already has a substantial amount of resources here. And I don't know that if the school district or if parents have even tapped into these resources as much as we possibly can. We spend a lot of money on our library system. We have the CRC here in Oak Park, and there's so many other places and other educational-related organizations. I'm even thinking of, um, what was that I'm just talking about, um, not methnasium. Oh, I'm, I'm losing it, right? The, oh, the art program on Harrison in the Arts District, we're right around from the Art District, right? After-school enrichment programs where we really can draw on these other programs to provide families with some kind of maybe either discounted after-school programming or weekend programming, enrichment programming, where parents like myself can drop their kids off somewhere space and in a place where, where our taxes are already being devoted to so that they can take advantage of the learning and the resources in those spaces. So that's one of my biggest areas in terms of just fiscal responsibility is just taking advantage of the resources we already have, that we're already paying for and incorporating them a bit more.
Thank you. Uh, Ashley?
Thank you. Yeah, we just bought a house here this spring. We were renting for a long time before that. Um, and I'm just, I'm thoughtful about the, the fact that I want people who want to move to Oak Park because we have wonderful schools to be able to have access, like, as an equity issue, to be able to afford to live in Oak Park to attend our schools. So there is such a balance to strike between giving our students the resources, the world that we want to give them, and still making Oak Park a place where people can live and can afford to live. Um, so holding those two things in tension. I do think that, um, you know, it's never fun to say no to a, a program that we think will help our students. Um, and we wanna be thoughtful about how we do that. Um, there are a lot of things that I, I think people just don't know exist in Oak Park. I just did a focus group for the Park District, and I don't think people know that there's scholarships for Park District programs, and there's all sorts of resources available. Um, so really just being thoughtful about how we, um, talk about and communicate these resources, um, how we communicate out to the community what we're doing for our students so they feel like those tax dollars are going somewhere, um, meaningful, and they're not grousing and grumbling about the fact that they're paying for the flourishing of children's lives in the community. Um, so I think there's a lot of things we can do to take the resources we're already allocating and really make clear what a good job we're doing of stewarding those.
Thank you. Becky?
As a school board member, um, I think this is obviously a question that comes up all the time. Um, so I do appreciate, you know, us having an opportunity to address it. The most important thing is to think about the work that has already been done. Um, so I do know under Dr. Shaw, one of the biggest things has been looking at enrollment for schools. Um, and I think that was part of the conversation the previous year. So I think it would be just important for us to make sure that there's transparency and a closing communication loop. So obviously, we have to be fiscally responsible and honor that we are a resource-rich, um, school district, if anything. I know right now, we've been talking about, um, public school funding and data from 2022 indicated we had about 3.3% um, federal funding. And feel free, anyone that's gonna answer next, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, so we do rely quite a bit on property taxes. So I do feel strongly that we do have that responsibility to our community. Um, but we have to do it also with compassion when it comes to cutting down programming.
Thank you. Nancy?
So to Becky's point, our, our funding comes from property taxes. We don't have an industrial base here. We don't have a big manufacturer that we can pull money from. Um, we're limited by the state in how much we can actually, um, add each year. We have, uh, it's CPI. If CPI goes above 5%, we're limited to 5%. Um, that, you know, our buses charge us more than 5%. We still have to deal with it. Um, and one of the things we've been really good about as a board is being very committed to not going to referendum. We will stick within what we have. And on top of that, just being careful with our, our staff. Because I mean, the bulk of our salary is our teachers, our teaching assistants, our front desk staff, the people who clean our buildings. You know, it's, it's, it's a lot of people. And so, um, we don't have a lot of frivolous things hanging out that we can cut. So careful stewardship of that is incredibly critical in what we're doing.
Thank you. Vincent?
I'll be accused of plagiarism. Everything Nancy said, that's the, that's the key. I mean, there's no, we don't have this massive Walmart or Target, or Target, what my family calls it, the baby Target, um, is not producing a ton of like tech, property tax revenue for us to kick off. I think the one of the most important things that we can do, um, as members of the board is to tell people like, hey, when taxes go up, they go up on everyone, but also as members of the community, we feel that pinch as well. So I think that like, when you do have a high tax base, it puts even more pressure on everyone involved between, um, teachers as well as, um, students as well to, to deliver a great product, like. Whenever you talk to people like, why'd you move here? We moved here for schools. Like, that is the key why people are moving. And so I think if people are making that investment, it's really important for the district to produce a very high-quality product. So no one's gonna love paying our taxes, but it stings a little less when you feel like your kids are going to top rate at schools.
Thank you. Venus?
Um, we are, we are actually doing a really good job in being good stewards of, um, our money. It only comes, the majority of it comes from, uh, our property taxes, and we're aware of that. There's a little bubble in the back of every board member's head that says, don't go to referendum. Um, and we spend our money, uh, accordingly because we, we are, we don't wanna go to referen- referendum either. Um, so we do really, uh, we do a good job, but we are also really well-resourced. So, um, when we look at our peer districts who actually may have a Walmart or have other, um, taxing bodies in their, um, city or municipality, um, geographies, we are still meeting the needs of our kids and are right in the middle in terms of, um, what we do with our money and compared to other districts that may have a little bit more, um, more taxing bodies. Additionally, we have a financial oversight committee that is members of the community. So they're not going to let us, uh, do anything that would be outside of being fiscally responsible.
Thank you. This'll be the last question before, uh, closing statements, and Ashley, you'll start this one off. All right, you've been elected. It's four years from now. What do you tell the public you've been most proud of in your time in service of those four years?
Gosh, I would say twofold, if I'm allowed to do two. I would say making our school district a place where students really feel like they belong, they're loved, they're seen, they're known. Um, they feel like they, they just are, belong in that area and the, the place where they're at and that they have people who, who are looking after them. Um, and again, I think that's gonna like trickle down into all of the different aspects we've talked about academically, um, socially, emotionally, mental health-wise, all of those sorts of things. Um, and I also think just that our teachers feel like they are supported and respected. Um, and that they have the resources, whatever the curriculum we decide on, whatever, all of those aspects go into it. They have those resources to be able to be the best teachers that they can be. Um, because I know that they're in this profession because they love the kids, because they want these kids to flourish. Um, so yeah, if I can make students and teachers happy to go to the school buildings every day, I feel like that would be, um, a successful term on the board.
Thank you. Becky?
Thank you. Um, implementing, um, the literacy curriculum and seeing those gaps in reading close. I really wanna be able to send and see kids in the high school setting, um, be able to be more independent, um, in their reading skills. So I think that's a big one. Another one is improving our report card overall. Um, since I moved to D97, things have shifted. Um, we focused on equity and I almost feel like our ratings went down at the same time with the public. And I don't want to see that be aligned. I think, um, when we talk about the achievement gap, my hope is that we can also talk about the opportunity gap. Um, and so as a board member, I think those two can align. Um, closing a reading gap and talking about how we made it there successfully, but thinking about all students would be something that I'd be very proud of.
Thank you. Nancy?
So related to that opportunity gap, um, just to be clear, with, with equity and addressing equity, it's not the students. It's us. It's the adults in the room. So what I would really love to see after four years, and we've started moving there, I'd like to keep it going, is families feel like they belong and they're listened to. Um, teachers feel like they belong and they're listened to, admin that feel like they belong and they're listened to, that every one of us is focused on what we need to do to have our students feel supported and belong and doing their best and really able to move on from here to just knock it out of the ballpark on whatever they wanna do when they're moving forward. I want students to actually come in here and be like, look, I have all this support network ready to keep me doing my best work. Um, and that's what I would really just love to see at the end of all this is, is kids that are just doing their best.
Thank you. Um, Vincent?
Yeah, I think, uh, similar to what Becky and others have said, like, if we can reduce the, the achievement gap between students, um, as well as kind of what we talked about earlier is like, if in four years, the way that we talk about the middle schools is significantly different because they think that there's this K5 experience, and I think Ashley was talking about where everyone loves it and it's this amazing experience. And then middle school becomes this like, oh, I'm going to that place. So I think if like in four years, we are talking about D97 as an amazing K8 place and there's no like tension there or apprehension, I think that I'd be really proud. As well as it's like, if in four years, we have a soup, if we get to Illinois State Superintendent of the Year, that means that like we did our job in supporting the superintendent and all the policies that have been in place since she got here had led to great outcomes for our students as well as our community.
Thank you. Venus?
Um, I think everyone has said a lot of, of, I, I agree with a lot of the sentiments expressed in terms of, uh, what I would like to see done in the next four years. Um, I also would like to really improve our community engagement. And what I mean by community, I mean our parents. I mean those whose children are no longer in D97. Um, I mean our teachers, I mean our students, I mean our admin, even the folks who, um, uh, our school admin as well as admin, um, in the building on, uh, Madison. If we as adults, and this is similar to what Nancy said, if we can get it right, then we're gonna deliver the right thing for our kids. But we also have folks who don't come to the table, and we need to make the table, we need to bring the table to them. Um, so from that community engagement standpoint, um, making sure that parents understand what those test scores mean and what resources, resources are available to them. I've been in, in meetings where, um, the, the conversation, um, was Edspeak. And I'm, I'll ask a question about what does that mean, what are those acronyms you're using? But I know not everybody is, is interested in doing that or feels comfortable doing that. But making sure parents understand what the road is that's gonna get their kids to success. And if that means going to them as opposed to the model of them coming to us, I think that's really important for us to do.
Thank you. Twyla?
Thank you, Venus, for your response because you were thinking, as I was thinking about bringing the table to the parents. I truly believe that one of the biggest issues, and I don't really like to refer to it as an achievement gap because remember, I stated that I really believe that this, uh, difference in performance is not so much the result of lack of achievement or things of that nature, but really it's a lack of equitable access to resources and support. And sometimes those resources are not as explicit as we think about. When my girls come home after school, they, this leads me to my next point. I'm able to help them even with advanced geometry or advanced statistics and things of that nature. But not everybody has a professor parent at home who has extensive background in math and their father is a math educator. So that, like, these things are just something that is not gonna be available in every household. And one thing that I really, really, really wanna see changed is the school district to be able to work more, again, with our community partners to provide affordable and accessible after-school care. So many students will do just so much more if they just have a little bit more support, active support from those people who are trained in the materials that they are learning as opposed to putting pressure on parents who may not have that background or may not have the time. We have to keep it real. Not all parents have the time to sit down and help their children with extensive problem sets and things of that nature every night. And of after-school care and tutoring is really expensive, and this is coming from a professor parent. We have to find a better way.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna do closing statements now, and Becky, you're gonna start off, um, with the, the closing statement. One minute.
So thank you for your, for tuning in, for those of you that have stayed on the whole time. I know we're over time. So, um, I think the biggest things for me again, um, my name is Becky Perez, Becky Perez. Um, I'm bilingual, bicultural. I believe in equity. I believe currently, public education is being, um, questioned from funding to what we're teaching our kids to how we are gendering or using pronouns. It seems like everything across the board is being discussed, um, in the public sphere. And I think that the school board has a wonderful opportunity for us to bridge the gap between community and the superintendent. That's our biggest responsibility. Of course, we have to be fiscally responsible, but my goal really is to be a representative for the community, um, to build relationships with teachers, to ensure that people feel heard. Um, and I'm very much so on par with many of my, um, folks here in regards to bringing school to the community. So how do we bridge the gap? Not talking about the kids that are on the achievement gap, but talking with the community about that. So I believe in equity and I hope that I'm able to be a representative for you, um, school board. Thank you.
Nancy?
So I wanna say thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to all of those who are listening into these forums. Um, I'm running for D97 School Board because we still have work to do to live up to our equity policy and really best serve all of our students. Board members committing to more than one term in office has been shown to improve efficacy because deeply understanding the pressing issues takes time and is important. And in these times of a shifting national backdrop, it's more important than ever to have board members who have the, who bring experience to the district in addition to those bringing a new perspective. Being on the board is a significant commitment in time and effort. I know what I'm committing to. And I'm here asking for your vote because I believe in the critical role public schools play in general, but also specifically in Oak Park. They're at the heart of our community. So for more information, if you'd like to ask me questions, I do have a website up at, um, nospacesdrivenford97.com. Uh, and I really appreciate everyone taking the time to listen to everyone here tonight. Um, I'd like to thank my fellow candidates and, um, thank you in advance for your vote on April 1st.
Thank you. Vincent?
Yeah, thanks. I'll, I'll echo everyone's thoughts. Thanks, everyone, for tuning in. Um, especially after the last election, I'm glad to be in a space where I can have a conversation about politics and it's nice and it's civil and I could have coffee with everyone on this panel. Um, the reason why I'm running for school board is like, I've spent my entire life as an educator. Um, a couple of its fact, I, I love Oak Park. Like, if I was a tattoo person, I would get an Oak Park tattoo, but tattoos just aren't really my thing. Um, but I think that like, I've done enough. Um, but I think that like I've done enough things that allowed me to feel like I could come into the board and be a contributing member, but also I'm humble enough to know like, there are things I just don't know. Even though I've been a principal, I've been a teacher, like being a teacher didn't prepare me to be a principal. Being a principal probably won't fully prepare me to be a board member. So I'm looking forward to also being able to learn and grow and be able to contribute to the community.
Thank you. Venus?
Um, I'm running again for the D97 School Board because um, I really enjoy the work that we have done as a board to move our district forward. Um, I want Oak Park schools to be the best that they can be, um, and that work continues. The work is not done. Um, I am somebody who asks curious questions. Um, I exhibit courage and leadership um, by, by asking those questions or um, saying, this doesn't make sense to me, help me understand. Cause if it doesn't make sense to me, it's not gonna make sense to you. So I feel like I ask the questions that the public and the community would ask. Um, and I don't just brush over things. I also want there to be accountability for our student outcomes. Um, I really love that we have um, now a data expert because it allows us to understand where we are and where we need to go and have specific goals. I am really big on community engagement. Um, as a board member, it's really hard to be out in the community and do the board work. But community engagement is really important. Uh, equity is also important. So I'm asking for your vote um, to allow me to continue the work for another four years.
Thank you. Twila?
Yes, thank you all so much for tonight. This was a very fun Thursday evening for me, but again, I'm a political scientist. So right, um, elections and things of this nature, I find quite intriguing. I enjoyed hearing everybody's responses tonight and I believe that everybody here is really committed to supporting and improving OP97. For me in particular, I really am focused on equity. I really wanna see Oak Park live up to the mission or the motto that we often hear put out, right? In my mind, I like to think of myself as a, a practical progressivist, right? I feel like um, we can definitely get to these, these higher goals, these social equity goals, but we can do so practically. And Oak Park has a ton of resources and the diverse nature of our community allows us to have access to so many different types of resources to improve these um, these issues. And so I really am interested on empowering not just the students, but the parents, because I really think that we have to find a better way to get parents involved and I really kinda wanna push the school board to maybe think about using social media and those screens we don't like so much to get parents involved a little bit more and to give students a bigger outlet. But I'm, I'm really here to just make sure everybody enjoys their experiences regardless of their background.
Thank you. Ashley?
Well, what a gift it's been to be with all of you. I'm just so heartened by hearing from all the other candidates by the way that all of us just really want Oak Park to be a wonderful place to live and a wonderful place for our children to grow up. I'm struck in this conversation and I'm struck as a, as a young mom, so my youngest is eight months. Uh, and then my oldest just started school um, this past year. And so just, just realizing how much the school is a center of community, of, of encounter with others. I feel like I was like drowning by myself in parenthood until we were plugged into a school. Um, and so just the awareness of that and the awareness of how our schools play a role in the community at large is so deeply on my heart. Um, and my kids are gonna be in D97 for the long haul, so I'm, I'm here to stay for the next decade and a half or more. Um, and I just really wanna make sure our schools are places where kids feel safe and heard and loved. Um, I was a former middle school teacher, so the middle school is especially on my heart as we think about things going forward. Um, and I'm just excited to be part of these conversations to keep our democracy robust and healthy um, by having these contested elections. So yeah, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you guys, um, uh, job well done. I um, you know, I've lived here for 47 years. Wasn't a school district for 30 years. So um, you're, you're a very knowledgeable group. It's almost scary how knowledgeable you are about these issues. So I am impressed and you know, public service is the bedrock of democracy. And I thank all of you candidates for giving your time tonight. Um, you know, it's a gift to have a contested race. It really is. Um, not all the communities do. Oak Park is, has been very good about this and, and I'm glad that you are all here and all running for this office. Um, I'm, I also wanna remind you that there'll be a recording of this um, uh, event and it'll be posted either on our, on our, our, our webpage and also the library's YouTube page.